Good morning. This is the Board of Education Budget and Regular Monthly Meeting of March 24, 2020. Can I please have an attendance of everybody who's at the meeting?
Barbara Wheaton is here.
Doug Cooper.
Brian Mealy.
Jennifer Anderson.
Sean Petretti.
Jill Giarash. Hi, to the conference, everybody here.
Doherty.
Jerry Doherty. Is Jennifer Anderson there?
Yes, I'm here.
Jeff Conley will be absent from the meeting. And Tom Kelly. Present.
Frank Bocky is here as well.
And Jeff Conley is absent today. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, to the stand, one nation, under God.
First on the agenda is the. Okay, can people hear me?
Speak up a little bit louder.
Okay. First on the agenda is approval of minutes of February 13, 2020, February 27, 2020, and March 5, 2020. I'd like a motion and a second to approve those. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Next is accept the claims report, financial statements and treasures report. February 2020. And treasures report also February 2020.
Kathy, can you just repeat the motions like at that point so we say it out loud?
A motion to accept the claims report, the financial statements and the treasuries report.
Say your name when you say it.
And second, Barbara Wheaton. All right, next on the agenda. Do we vote all in favor of that?
Any discussion?
Okay, then, yeah, let's, all in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's carried. Next on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Yeah, so at this time, we are going to move into the superintendent's budget presentation. So if the board members could open that document right now, Mr. Bocky will put that up on the screen. Good morning, everyone. We're going to, for the purposes of this meeting, we are going to skip some of the superintendent's entire budget presentation. However, it is available on the district website in its entirety. Right now, we're going to focus on some of the more financial items for purposes of this meeting. So we have spent a lot of time talking about budget strategies. As always, we are committed in this budget to delivering high-quality instruction for students. And our budget that is proposed is in line with the district's missions, mission and goals. I want to reiterate from our March 5 meeting that our final tax levy threshold was 2.29%. Keep in mind, change from our original meeting, that was 2.51.
Jill, that would be the maximum, that would be the maximum that we can charge?
That's correct, Mr. Cooper. Correct. We'll talk about that in a few moments. So we have developed a multi-year plan for educational programs and district initiatives. And many of those district initiatives are included within this year's budget. So on the next slide. Which is the 2021 proposed budget. I want to go through these dates with you. So our original, our original proposal was on February 13, 2020. At that time, our proposed budget was a 1.69% change from the last year's budget. The proposed tax levy was 1.9%. And at that time, the allowable levy was 2.51. We had not received the BOSI's budget at that time. And we had some final calculations with regard to the capital reserve.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's hard to see the screen. There's a thing that says change presenter. Could you, can you possibly remove that? You can't see the percentage changes on the screen.
Um, you can't see what, Mr. Mealy?
On the right-hand column, it's the proposed. And then it says the amount, and then it says percent change. There's a pop-up that's blocking the percent change. I think it says something about change the presenter or something.
I don't know if that's on mine, Brian.
Neither mine's fine, too.
Oh, wait a minute.
Brian, that'd be something that you can change on your own, on your own screen.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And I think, Brian, you can move who's speaking. You can move that box on your device, I believe.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, and then, so at that time, we were 0.6% under the tax cap. On March 5, if you move on to the next box, on March 5, we had adjusted the allowable levy at that point in time because we had received the BOSI's budget. And Mr. Bocky was able to finalize that capital reserve calculation within this. So our allowable levy went to 2.9%, which is the final and remains today. Again, it's the allowable levy. It is not what we are proposing. But on March 5, we had proposed a 1.9% tax levy. So if you go to the next slide. There were several discussions at some of our previous meetings about specific items, as well taking into consideration the current situation within our community with regard to the coronavirus and perhaps some family and businesses really struggling within this economic climate. So our administrative team has recommended the following adjustments to the original proposed budget. I'd like to walk through those items with you. When you look at the curriculum items that are listed, some of them are new course materials, instructional resources, et cetera. Mrs. Finnegan, who actually has joined the meeting, was able to take a look at those items and actually pre-purchase some of those items for next year. So with remaining funds in this year's budget, she is able to continue to purchase these materials for next year. But it will not be included in next year's budget. There are, the next items, you'll see from the elementary principal, Dr. Divine, who is also on the call. There were some furniture items and a refresh of the hallways. Mr. Bocky and Dr. Divine spent some time looking at that furniture request. And we were able to reduce that by $2,275, as well as take out that hallway refresh. It's not a need, you know, it would be nice, but it's not a need. As well, we are going to look to purchase some of the furniture where possible in this year's budget, where we have leftover equipment money. Please note that equipment can only be purchased out of an equipment code. So where we might be able to make transfers in other code, this is not a code that you are allowed to make transfers. So we have to be mindful of what's left in the equipment code and what our needs are for the remainder of the year. The next items are maker space items for the high school and the elementary school. As you know, this year, we started maker spaces in both libraries. Mrs. Doherty was able to work with Megan Tepenhardt, Mrs. Sorni, and Mrs. Charters to really take a look at their requests. And some of those items could be purchased this year out of remaining supply funds. The basketball scores table is the next item that is being removed. That is not a need. That would be nice, but it's not something that we have to have. And so Mr. Wormuth has removed that item. The next two items are general repairs from the technology budget, which is a reduction of $10,000. Some of those items, Mrs. Doherty has able to, again, do within this year's budget. And on the VMware renewals, she was able to get a reduced price on some of these renewals. So that brings us to a reduction of $55,275. At this point, I'm going to ask if any of the board members have any questions about those proposed reductions to the original budget.
Jill, I have a question. This is Jen Anderson. Right now, I know a lot of software companies are offering discounts. Like you said, reduced prices on technology. Since we're doing remote learning, is there anything available for next year regarding reductions?
Nothing has come out on reduced prices. Some of the technology companies, yes, have been offering some free software or just free access to materials. I'm going to tell you that some of these companies are also really inundating districts with these products in hopes that you'll purchase them for next year. So no, there is no extension into next year on reductions, except the ones that we've already taken advantage of, that we're aware of at this point in time. Now, should this situation, Mrs. Anderson, go any longer? You know, I don't know if that will change. And if that's the case, and we even do approve these things, we certainly will take advantage of those reductions, you know, in next year's budget, and that, of course, would be a savings.
Thank you.
A worst-case scenario. Suppose next year. Not only the rest of this year, perhaps next year, we had to do remote learning. Are we, are we prepared for that? And wouldn't we need any new items?
So if we were to have to go for an extended period of time to remote learning. Currently, our students in grades three through 12 have device. If you recall, at the initial stages of this, our students in grades five through 12 already had a Chromebook. Mrs. Doherty and her amazing tech team really rallied together and took all the Chromebooks that were on carts that were used for our third and fourth grade classrooms that typically are shared, as well as some of our older products. And she was able to put together enough Chromebooks for every third and fourth grader, which we delivered in our first instructional delivery run. If we were to go beyond this, right now, we are creating documents for our K to three stu-, K to two students, I'm sorry. And those are paper copies. So kindergartners, first and second graders do not have a device. That would be something that we should consider going forward. We do have some iPads that our kindergartners and first graders currently use, but not enough for every child. And, you know, those are really the devices that, you know, are students in grades, grades K through two use at this time. So we would have to look at either a BOSI's agreement or purchasing more of those items. And again, that would come out of an equipment code, and those are very expensive items. Additionally, we are working through a few challenges, not a lot of family who don't have Wi-Fi access. We are required to provide instruction to every child in district right now. And families without Wi-Fi in grades three through 12, we are working through identifying those families and seeing where any challenges exist. And that is, that may be to the district should we need it.
You know, that was my concern, the families that are having trouble with web access. This is Brian, I'm sorry, Brian Mealy. That was my main concern. And I know there are certain programs for the different companies where they offer free services or temporarily, you know, the 90-day free, I don't know if that's something that we can take part in.
Yeah, so Altice Mobile has been one of the products that has offered some free Wi-Fi. And we're working with families to try to have them access that free Wi-Fi through that first. Okay, are there any questions?
Jill, this is George Haas. Um, in the technology budget, there is some money for Chromebooks and all. I guess they were for replacements. They don't help us get to K to.
Well, first of all, that's in next year's budget for next year's item. So I guess, George, you know, when we look to next year, right now, that's a refresh. Or for Mrs. Doherty, I'll let her speak to this. But it's for our fifth and ninth graders next year because some of the Chromebooks that we have are very dated. And so those are required to really bring everyone, particularly our new incoming fifth graders, to get a Chromebook. Or you want to speak to that?
So our goal would be to get onto a, remember, we had Chromebooks for multiple years now. So they're of different ages, and they were staggered in the carts. So our goal would be that every incoming fifth grader and ninth grader gets a Chromebook because the life of the Chromebook is usually about four years. So that's the cycle we want to get into. So for next year's, it's a refresh for fifth and ninth. And then we would take the older Chromebooks and move them into the carts. The carts that we currently gave out and distributed to the third and fourth graders, they had carts in each classroom, but those Chromebooks are probably a good five, some of them are even six years old. So, um, so that's just going to be our refresh cycle. We want to get to the point where we're just doing two grade levels a year. Next year, it's a little bit more because it's the two grade levels in the, in some of the carts. And we'll have to just reevaluate that now, given the current circumstances.
Any other questions? Okay, so, Mr. Bocky, if you could turn to the next slide. So with those recommendations in mind, these would be the changes, how the budget would change due to those reductions. Pending your approval of this, the proposed budget would be $41,418,100, which would be a 1.55% change over last year. The proposed tax levy would be $37,490, I'm sorry, $37,494,923, which now would be a proposed change over the, on the tax levy of 1.75%. Again, our allowable levy of $37,695,506 is at 2.29%. That does not change. So on the amount under the tax cap would be $200,583, which is a half a percent change. And of course, if we had to go to a contingency budget, there would be no percent change, which would be $40,784,048. Again, this is pending your approval. Okay, if we go to the next slide. It's essentially what I just said, said to you. But I want you to recognize that the budget to budget increase with these proposed changes would be $634,052. So budget to budget, again, it's 1.55%. And then the decreases are shown in this slide, getting us to the maximal level levy of 2.29 at the bottom. Are there any questions? I'm moving, I'm sorry.
No, no questions.
Okay. So again, I want to just quickly go through these. But the proposed budget on the next slide supports enriched educational opportunities for all students. It's grades K through 12. We want to continue our efforts in the area of strengthening our language arts program. We are definitely looking at new resources for our students in grades five through eight with new math, mathematics resources. Want to continue to expand on our STEAM and computer science, our elective courses across all disciplines. We value the professional development across all subject areas. And we want to focus a little bit more on some of our challenged learners, looking at a math product for them as we did with the ELA product we did last year. There are some replacement of some furniture that really needs to be more adaptive. We talked a little bit about STEAM initiatives district-wide. And of course, focusing our IT and security infrastructure, enhancing and placing old equipment and updating our learning spaces, bathrooms, and faculty rooms, which we've done a little bit each year. And again, this is just another cycle in that process. We are very proud, if you look at the next slides, of being able to offer small class sizes, a foreign language program. We continue to offer the NJRTC program. We are adding more clubs to what we even added last year. Our students are taking advantage of after-school activities. We are expanding our business program and our special programs such as artists in residence, after-school remediation, before and after-care culinary programs. And on this agenda tonight, tonight, no, not tonight, is a proposal for the board to approve the universal pre-K program district next year. We had two people respond to that RFP, and we would like you to approve one of those vendors today. So we continue again with just great opportunities for all kids. And I think one of the things in this crisis right now is really our students, Mr. Petretti. And I'm going to ask him to speak about this for a moment. But he is even continuing community service activities throughout this crisis. Mr. Petretti, you want to speak just a little bit to that?
Um, yeah, it's just, you know, I'm encouraging students to get outside individually and, you know, do some beach cleanups and just kind of keep it going. You know, we're giving, I'm giving two hours community service for every kid that shoots me a picture with a bag of garbage at a park or a beach. Again, encouraging them to only do so individually or with immediate family members.
So I think, you know, just how much we value that student leadership and those community service projects. We've also done some outreach to the iconic landing and trying to see ways that perhaps we can encourage and keep the spirit up with the seniors in that community. Another important component, our active booster and athletic clubs, PTA, PTA, and SEPTA organizations have been phenomenal, particularly around this situation. They've done some outreach. We've had some phone conferences with them and just staying in touch. But they couldn't be more encouraging and supportive. Brian?
This is Brian. Speaking of iconic landing, as you know, I worked there, and the folks are hunkered down. And there was a request for a possible disc or digital version of the school plays. I don't know if that's possible to show the members. Many of the members are grandparents and great-grandparents of our school district kids. And that would really cheer them up since they're hunkered down in their apartments and cottages. So just, I wanted to pass that on, that there's a request to view our play, which was, you know, Into the Woods, which was phenomenal.
Yeah, we could look into that. I know they have a TV channel, correct?
Yeah, yeah, they have a couple of TV channels with their daily updates and with their regular programming. But that would really touch their hearts if we could do that.
Interesting idea, Brian.
Yes, we'll definitely follow through on that, Brian. So if you look to the next page of this presentation, the capital reserve items to be considered through a multi-year plan. We have spoken about this at prior meetings, new roofs, a pole barn, the athletic field renovation behind the gymnasium at the high school, which would support some additional activities for soccer, baseball, and lacrosse. Item of discussion for many months now has been the front of the high school building, the fascia outside of that, the multipurpose room at the high school, a steam wing enhancement, and new boilers. Within today's presentation, we're going to have a more comprehensive discussion on these capital reserve items. So finally, you know, again, the mission statement of the Matata Union Free School District is dedicated to providing a welcoming, safe environment where we encourage diversity, interdependence, and self-discovery are all items that are valued, as well as our educators, students, and families and community members who work together to create this dynamic, flexible, and engaging learning process, which I think we've seen really come to fruition. When you talk about everybody, educators, families, and community members working together, we certainly have seen that in rolling out this remote learning. And we already want to thank our teachers and our support staff. This has been a joint effort. I cannot thank our staff enough to say that we are able to provide remote learning in a way that I don't think other districts really have been able to deliver. And, you know, I hear that Matata Cutchog has been a role model in providing services to families, whether it be instruction, our food service, and as well as, you know, looking to create a childcare program. So I, again, I want to thank the community. I want to thank this administration. They are really doing the heavy lifting behind all of this. And, you know, from our tech department, troubleshooting, everything. I mean, we never would have expected, you know, that we'd be holding virtual faculty meetings and things like that, as well as creating a help desk on the main website. So if that families have struggles or issues, whether it be technology or even the mental health of their children, we're here to respond and keep this district going. So again, thank you to the community. Thank you to the Board of Education for your support. My admin team, I can't say enough. And of course, really the teachers who are connecting with kids on an everyday basis. And their creativity and outreach has been amazing. So thank you to everyone in this process.
Can I just interject there? This is Barbara. I really want to express our gratitude because the countless, countless hours and the dedication and the passion of the people that we have here, that's why we do so well. And just in a couple of other districts that I'm in touch with, honestly, they come nowhere near our response right away, how thorough we are. I'm just amazed, amazed. And these are districts right around us, too. Thank you, everybody.
I would, I would diddle that. You know, one of the board meetings, we have a board appreciation day or whatever it is. It's really austere.
Yes.
From, from the everyday secretary and custodians to administrators and everyone in between. They're the ones that carry this district. And I think we all appreciate their dedication and work. This is a good time when, when it really shows. So thank you guys immensely.
Thank you. I mean, yep.
I just want to add to those sentiments. I just can't tell you how, how nice of, to hear Mr. Petretti on the announcements. And I said the pledge with all the, everybody else in Matata Cutchog. Just that tidbit of normalcy was so appreciated. And as he encourages us, we have to keep going. And I appreciate your leadership as superintendent. As Barbara said, I've heard from other school districts that do not have what we're doing, and they want to know how we, how we're doing it. And I mentioned the bus story of delivering what the kids need. That was a nice story in the Suffolk Times. Just everybody's pulling together. We're not just a community, we're a family. So I'm glad to be part of the family, and we have to keep encouraging one another, and we're going to get through this. Thank you.
I would just, once more, Doug Cooper again. That in this time of economic, as well as health distress, we really have to work the money that we always spend in. There's a lot of businesses that are hurting, hurting a lot, and a lot of people that work for them that are hurting. It's, it's something we just have to keep in mind when we're spending money. Thank you.
Okay, so just to wrap up this mission statement, and again, I was remiss to mention the facilities team because really, they, they are the ones that are here every day. We, as a governmental agency, need to continue that. We, as a governmental agency, need to continue that instruction, that food service, as well as look into creating that childcare program. And we need the facilities crew to be here every day. They are doing the cleaning after everybody walks by and touches something, although we have a very limited staff. I'm essential employees, I think people have heard that term many times. We still have to have a skeleton crew here in district and that we have that running here at Kutchog West, at Kutchog East, where those instructional materials need to be duplicated and ready for families for next week. I want to thank Rafael Marias, who has done a yeoman's job, really outreach to families. We have eighty-nine families receiving food each week. And Christine Springer has been, you know, his really sidekick and helping to reach out to those families. Bianca, who works at Kutchog East, due to her bilingual skills, has reached out to families as well to make sure we're making that connection. And so again, if I left anyone out, I apologize. Because really this has truly been a community, a community effort. And I want to thank again, everyone, if it's not enough to say thank you. So at this point in time, we're going to close this portion of the presentation, but I want to remind everyone that the vote is Tuesday, May nineteenth, from three to nine PM at the high school gymnasium. However, I expect we may be getting some further guidance on this possible change of date, whether the commissioner and the governor choose to extend this, perhaps there might be some, you know, a change of voting till later than the May meeting. I'm sorry, the May date, my apologies. So as we receive further information about a change of date, we will certainly publicize that on the district website, as well as the signs outside the school, so people know of that change.
And Kate will be.
I suspect you did your request for absentee ballots also.
Yes.
Yep, we expect, yep, we certainly will have those absentee ballots. Kathy Gillyard is still working with the library, the library vote was just around the corner in early April, and we're not sure if that will continue the same way. But as we receive further information, again, we will ensure that that is public. Okay, so the next part of the presentation, we're going to move to personnel benefits, debt services and reserves. As you can see, this now says March twenty-fourth, but this was originally supposed to be at the March eighteen Board of Education meeting, so we are continuing with those presentations. Mr. Baki is going to speak on this, on our behalf here.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you to the board and for everyone listening at home as well, after the fact. So today, I'm going to talk a little bit about, like Joe had mentioned, the personnel benefits, debt service reserves. I don't have a lot of slides, but there's a lot in these in terms of the amount of the budget. So today, we're actually going to be talking about close to seventy-five percent of the budget that's within these categories. So first, just a little review of the overall budget drivers. So this year, the reductions are largely coming from, we do benefit from lower debt service, which you will see on the next slide. And some of the other benefits we have is on the facility side and then also IT. So we're leveraging a lot of the prior investments we made and we don't have a lot of large costs, just more on the replacement side and fine tuning things. In terms of our increases, the increases we're seeing this year are largely contractual, so employee health and retirement benefits, those are always going to go up a little bit just because of cost of living. Salaries, like I said, are contractual obligations and investments in textbooks and instructional resources we have this year, which is, in my opinion, where we want to see those increases.
Frank, am I, Doug? With the crash in the stock market, that's going to affect our contributions that we have to give for our employees, retirement system, et cetera?
Yes, it, it will, it will not next year, so. Yeah, there, there is a lag, so next year, you'll see on this slide, actually, I do have the retirement system costs in there. Those are locked in, so we know what it's going to be. Should expect if there is a material or long stock market decrease, the contribution rate from New York State will go up over the next few years.
The average, the state average several years when they increase or decrease rates?
Can you repeat that one more time, Doug?
If I understand correctly, if I remember correctly, the state averages over several years, how, how much they change our rates.
That's correct, yep. It's a weighted, it is, it is a multi-year average, so that's why the, the increase is going to be lagged, but it'll be longer and the same thing on the decrease side. So you'll see it coming like after the fact in the next few years. It really depends on how long the, the market declines and what, you know, the balance is. It's also weighted, it's not a hundred percent stock market, it's correlated to it, but how well the portfolio in both pension funds does over the next few years compared to the liability on the other side. So, simple terms, yes, our contribution should go up if the economy and the stock market continues to suffer.
Frank, Jenny Anderson here. I have a similar question regarding the health insurance increase. I'm not sure if the rates for next year came out already, and if they did, do you know what the percentage increase is?
No, so the, the rates we don't have for next year yet. So this year, we were fortunate, you can see, actually, if you look at the health insurance line, you'll see that it's a pretty modest, it's a high base, so it looks like a lot of money, but that is just a slightly over two percent increase. And the reason why that is, is, is low is because the first half of this year, we don't have an increase. So this current year, we've been fortunate because the Empire Plan they put in, they raised the deductible. So that generated a lot of revenue and we didn't see the historical increase. So I factor that into next year's, but on the back half of the year, we're not going to, we don't know the rate yet, it hasn't come out yet, but it, it will go up. Historically, over the past like two decades, say, it goes up about like eight percent a year, so it's been going up quite a bit. We just were fortunate this year. So that's why, that's how I came to the conclusion on like what we should budget for next year, but it's always, it's always an estimate.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. So just looking at this slide, like I said, if you, if you take a look down at the bottom, you see it's, it's over thirty-one million dollars. So it's seventy-five percent of our budget is right here in these nine items. So we have at the top, the total salaries. That is largely contractual, so that percentage ends up being about two point seven percent, it's just under two seven. And that is largely based, like I said, aside from the administrator's contract, which expires six thirty of this year. The other contracts, CSEA runs through two thousand twenty-two and MCTA goes through two thousand twenty-three. Terms of our ERS and TRS, those are based on rates that I get from each retirement system. So you see the ERS system didn't go up as much, and that's largely because I think the, the rate didn't change as much, like we, we had a little bit extra this year in that code, so I, I took that as opportunity to not increase it as much, it's based on an actual rate. The TRS looks like it's going up a little more, but again, it's, it's really on the rate that I get from the retirement system itself. Social Security, you should see go up similar salaries, which it is. Other benefit costs like workers' comp, unemployment, those are based on historical costs. We, we spoke about the health insurance where we are actually quite fortunate in the percent increase this year. And I think that again, that's full, we had the, no, no increase for half of the year. And I think that ended up helping us a bunch and we're also, because of that, a little over budgeted for the current year, so there's going to be some extra money in that. So we're coming off a higher base, so I didn't have to increase it as much in the current, in the two thousand twenty-one year. Dental insurance, again, is going to be based off of what our rates are and the number of employees. And then the other benefits, this, looking at this, it looks like a gigantic increase. It's not, it's simply that disability insurance, four oh three B contributions are in here. During the current year budget, four oh three B contributions were not included in the code, so we are including those this year. So it's really not an increase of that magnitude, it's purely based on the expected contributions of the people who are receiving it, based on the contractual obligation. So I know that's a, a lot. Any questions on that? On to debt service, so as I mentioned, debt, that our debt is going down, so it's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we are saving. So it amounts to about a six percent reduction. You can see at the top, we are, we have some maturing debt, so the principal is going down, that's, that's why we are generating the most savings. And then we're also on the energy performance contracts, just continuing the amortization of our debt. We should see that continue to decline and we do not have any anticipated increases in debt. For our tax anticipation notes, I believe that we would need roughly the, the current, the normal level of, of, of note from that. And I do not anticipate the interest rates going above what we budgeted for last year. So I think that's, that's steady, that's why you say no increase there. And the last slide here shows, it, it goes into our reserves and also touches on our overall revenue. So you can see where we're utilizing the current reserves in, in the proposed two thousand twenty-one budget. So state aid, we, we are anticipating a slight increase there, so that's why it goes up slightly to, to three million dollars. ERS and IBLR Reserve, we're also continuing to use a little bit of reserve money where we can in our reserves that are properly funded. You don't see a TRS retirement or reserve usage because we do not have a lot of money in that reserve, so we're not going to use it. But we're going to continue where appropriate to make, to monitor our reserve balance while we're looking at the budget. Same for workers' comp, again, continuing to use what I think is a healthy level. And then appropriated fund balance, other miscellaneous income are relatively stable. We are decreasing the appropriated fund balance according to our reserve plan appropriately. And the, so the total non-tax revenue you can see is just under four million dollars and the bulk of our revenue is coming from that property tax, which is thirty-seven four nine four, which brings you down to the total revenue, which is the same increase as our expenditure budget and it's one point five five percent. And that's going to be all that I have in terms of these categories, unless there were any questions. I know a lot of it is, it's a lot of, it's a large amount of the budget we're talking about. A lot of it is, like I said, kind of contractual, so I don't know, if anyone has any questions, I'd be, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, the next plan is to move over to the capital reserve.
Okay, Frank, if you can move to the capital reserve project slides.
Okay.
All right, before we get started on the capital reserve projects, I just want you to reiterate what the process is in terms of voter approval for the capital reserve.
For the capital, to, the voter approval to do a capital reserve project?
Correct.
So the process would be, we would have to put up a proposition based on the recommendation of the board. So if we wanted to stay, you know, do install new boilers, we would, after the board allows us to do that, we would put a proposition up, put in a legal notice and then the voters would either vote to approve or reject that. If they were to approve it, then we would work with our architect and, and our legal team to file the project with New York State Education Department, at which point, once they were to approve the plans and then they would issue us a building permit, we would be able to get started on the construction. Again, all in coordination with state ed. And once that was done, we would file all the appropriate forms and paperwork and request aid back on, on some of those projects. And that's kind of like the full life cycle of a capital project in a very short sentence.
Okay, thank you. And also, can you just provide the status of the capital reserve projects that the voters approved in last year's budget?
Yes, so on the interior doors, we're, we're, we're almost ready to begin on, on both. So on the interior doors, we do have legal approval, we have state ed approval. The last piece we're waiting on is just the BOSI's, Nassau BOSI's cross contract to be approved, so that way we were able to actually get started on the, on the construction. Similarly, on the air conditioning, I, I just, actually, this is just new news for everyone on this call. Like I just received the approval from our own legal team in terms of using Suffolk County contract for the air conditioning. So I will be in touch this week with our architect in terms of getting started. That could be started as early as like the end of this week or, or possibly next week. So we're, we're very close to beginning, starting on both projects because we've just received kind of the legal approval to begin.
Okay, and that air conditioning was for the Manitowoc cafeteria and the Kutchog East cafeteria spaces.
Correct.
Frank, when, when we go with the BOSI's, suppose a company that is not, does not have that bid, would like to bid on the project, can they do that?
Well, at, at this point, typically, if, when John, when the architect would bid it, bid out the project, it would be open for more people to bid. This we're using, I don't know if like, because we are using a bid that has already been conducted. I, I don't believe that we would be able to then have a new entrance into the bidding process because the, the, the bidding evaluation process has been completed already at this point for this project. Like if we were to do, say, a new project and we wanted to bid things out, then, then yes, like new, like it would be open to all bidders.
Suppose a company wanted to come in on the, the BOSI's bid?
For the doors you're talking about specifically, Doug?
The doors, air conditioning, anything. It's just hypothetical.
Okay.
They, they could or they couldn't, they couldn't do it without opening up the whole bid process. And the reason we go for the BOSI's bid or, or county bid is because it usually saves us money.
Yes, that's, that's correct. So they, so we would say if a company where, if they had, let's say, like a Suffolk County contract, they were on contract, we, we could decide to use another company. We decided to use the Nassau BOSI's bid to use this company because we found it to be like the lowest cost for this specific project. So that's why we decided to go this particular route. But for any project, it could be either our architect doing an open bid or we, we have the ability to find vendors that we can use if it's at a lower cost. And that's kind of what we did on both of these projects, which resulted in estimated costs coming in below what we originally had projected with the architect. So on, on each project, we are saving money because of exactly what you're talking about. It's kind of like, for lack of a better term, shopping around within the legal guidelines that we're allowed to do for public works projects.
Okay, Greg, if you could now take over the presentation for the capital reserve projects, Mr. Wormuth?
Sure. So Mr. Baki is going to drive the slideshow as I present some of the projec, sorry, some of the projected proposals for the capital reserve project for next year. So Frank, if you can just take us to the next slide. So the first one we're going to look at is the new roofs. So we're looking at repairing or replacing roofs at Kutchog East in the first one. Those roofs there are over twenty years old, we've had some, some studies done on them and you'll see as I get towards the bottom, some of the recommendations for that space. But again, the Kutchog East roofs are twenty, twenty plus years old, the high school's a little bit better. The high school is anywhere between ten and twenty-five years in different places. We're looking at a couple of different options, whether we can reco or we actually have to rip and replace the, the roofs that are existing. Those projects would need SED approval. At Kutchog East, we know that we do need a a smaller project to do right now. But we need to really think about doing all of our roofs within the next five years. Right now, it's recommended that you do a $227,000 job immediately at Kutchog East. That's a replacement and a recall of of an area on the front. I believe it's over one of the front entrances along the main road. Mr. Kelly has pictures of those that we can share. But the total cost of the replacement or recoding at Kutchog East over the next five years is around 1.2 million. The high school is still up in the air. We're not exactly sure what our numbers are going to be there. And Mr. Kelly has been working on trying to get those numbers. And I anticipate that he will within the next couple of weeks. So we'll know where we are at the high school. But as far as priorities go, you have to fix Kutchog East for that number of 227 like ASAP. We really can't wait another year on that portion. That has to be replaced. The other things, we've got five years to get the rest of it done. And I think we'd be comfortable in doing that.
George, if we spent the 227 with this one patch, and then we have to do the rest of the roof, I mean, is the, are we wasting any of that 227?
No. Mr. Kelly, are you on as well?
Yeah. I didn't hear that part. Can you repeat that, Greg? I didn't hear you, the echo.
So what I believe, Mr. Haas asked if we spent the 227, would it be essentially, are we wasting it to have to redo something later? And my answer to that would be no, that there are separate places. So we can rip and repair that space without having to affect anything else. But Mr. Kelly, you can jump in if you have a different.
Yes, that that one area, the 227,000 is a total rip and replace. The other parts of the the roof, we did an infrared scan of the whole roof. And we can reco the rest of the area. If we wait, there's some areas that are borderline that have some water loss that if we wait longer, they might be a result of a total rip as well. So it depends. My recommendation with talking to the company is maybe go get another infrared report done. That's about $1,500 to do the high school and another $1,500 to do the elementary. We did the last report two years ago, so just get an updated report for $3,000. That might be a good way to move forward.
How to answer your question, Mr. Haas?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions on the roofs before we move forward?
Greg, I just want to be clear. When we talk about roofs, it's not just a roof at Kutchog East and a roof at the high school. There are multiple roofs at each site, correct?
Absolutely. So you have different levels of roofing at each place. So there's like different sections, if you will, of roofing. Absolutely.
Yeah, so when we
The high school have been replaced. So the high school, you'll see anywhere from 10 to 25 years old. But at Kutchog East, it's all 20, 20 years plus.
I just want to make that clear to the public that there are multiple roofs and thus the reason why some are a little bit newer, some a little bit older, and why some might need to be replaced over other ones. Thank you.
With that report, when we upgrade the report, that will explain it all very clearly.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Haas, you wanted to say something?
I guess as of right now, the recommendation is spending 227,000. Of course, when we have these studies done on the roofs, that could change. But because of the timing, we're going to be discussing putting some of these items on the May vote. Do we, are we getting more information to make that decision? Or we're working off of the recommendation of 227 for the Kutchog East roof right now?
Currently, currently, we have the estimate for the repair of that, of that need. We haven't identified with the company through the infrared scan, another immediate need. But we know that this space right here definitely needs replacement, and that's the estimate to do it. I think if we go out and do another infrared script scan, our results are going to tell us a timeline of which we need to begin to repair other places. But we already do know from the 2018 infrared scan that we've got a five-year window to do these things. But you're, I think you're correct in saying that what the information we have currently is that we need the 227 to be done now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Greg, can you move to the next slide?
Yes. So the next part that we're going to look at is the new boilers. And we're looking at replacing new boilers at certainly at Kutchog West and then looking at replacing the boilers at the Manitouk Junior High School. Currently, the boiler at Kutchog West is in need of immediate repair. So you have a decision to make. The immediate repair will cost you 34,500 or you can replace that entire existing unit for 98,000. Either way, those have to be done now. So you've got that boiler that is limping along based on a small repair that we made internally, but it's not going to get you where you need to be. The nice part about the boiler at Kutchog West is you don't have to take it out. There is room to put a new one in, so you don't have to get rid of that one. The other two that are in question were the ones at the Manitouk Junior High School, which are original. So you have to assume that the efficiencies of those are not what they once were or not what mechanics will provide you. So I think we have an estimate around 220,000 to replace the boilers at Manitouk Junior High School. The high school boiler systems are, I believe, Mr. Kelly, they're 1979. And we, we, we think, we feel that they are efficient in our energy performance. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, Greg. We have three in the new, in the other part of the building and they, they're quite, you know, between the three of them, they run fine. The older section, they are much harder. The original boilers are hard to get parts for. So it is getting harder and harder to keep those, that part of the the building, you know, up and running when we have issues.
So as far as priorities go, you have to, you have to make the decision to either replace or repair. The boiler at Kutchog West, the recommendation would be to replace it based on the, on the value of the two here in the slide. And then the recommendation is by 2025, it's replace those boilers at the, in the Manitouk Junior High School.
I, I was down there with Tom Kelly yesterday to look at all the boilers. And I have to agree, unfortunately, I have to agree with you, Greg, that the one at West, I think we, it needs replacement. It's probably the age of the building and the building is probably pushing 100 years. Manitouk's boilers are probably 85 years old. Probably ever when the building was built. So it's, it's time. I, the only difference I would think, Greg and Tom, is that I would, at West, for sure, I would just take out the old boiler because it is, it's got a crack on it. We patched it. It's, its days are near done. And I would just give you the old one, get it cleaned up. It's, it's undoubtedly got some insulation and it'd be good just to have it out of here.
What?
I don't know what that would cost.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's gonna be an additional cost.
That would be an additional cost, but that my, my recommendation would just, I don't see it's, if we're gonna get a new boiler, that should be what we're gonna be using. We shouldn't need a backup. We've never had a backup here before. And just the other thing is make sure whatever we do put in has gas capabilities. Because hopefully we would have street gas at some point. And like, it'll be better to operate.
Yeah, the nice part within these two quotes that are here within the the estimated cost do have the conversion ability to gas.
The Manitouk boiler on the junior high, I've seen them a number of times over the years. They're up and running. They're reasonably fine, but at some point, yes, they have to be replaced, whether it's within five years or at some point, we have to look at that.
Mr. Kelly and Mr. Bakke, in terms of the timeline, so on Thursday, the board needs to approve the final budget. Would it be possible to get a cost for the removal of the boiler at Kutchog West before Thursday?
Yeah.
Okay, I think we should just get the price on that at this point in time to make an informed decision for Thursday.
Okay.
Further questions on the boilers?
Greg, just a question on the how. Would this be another energy performance contract Johnson Controls? Or would this, is this an RFP? Like, what's the process of actually getting it done? Once we, if we approve it or when we approve it, what, is this a Johnson Controls Energy Performance, another contract?
It's a, Mr. Kelly or Mr. Bakke, but I don't, I don't believe so. It's, it's gonna certainly help in your energy performance, but I'm not sure about the, the actual answer to that. I don't know. Frank, do you have the answer to that question?
Yeah, the, the answer would be no. I mean, we, we could do it. We could have, like, it would be a possibility to do like a full-fledged energy performance contract and include, that's something you could include new boilers in. But that's not what this is proposing. I think what we would do here is simply just working with, it would have to most likely go through John Grillo to bid it out. Otherwise, we would kind of that same process I talked about, either bid it out or or look for someone off of a contract that we could use just to replace the specific boiler.
All right, thank you.
The only other question I would have, and it's and it's curiosity as well as efficiency, is the efficiency of our existing boilers? And what, what would be the expected efficiency of our new boilers? And in that, I could foresee the, the forces of more of being paid off over enough of years just because it's more efficient.
Yeah, I have, I would have to assume there's some truth to that, is that your energy cost savings over a period of time should be able to wipe out some of your costs based on just these boilers are nearly 100 years old compared to a new one. But I'm sure, I'm sure someone bidding this might be able to give us that analysis or projection.
Also, Greg, the, the ones at the high school, when we do that, we can tie that into our VMS system where we can control the heat. Right now, we don't have that ability.
Correct.
In the middle school, it's not tied into the VMS system. So the new boilers would have the ability to, to do that.
My recommendation at this point would be to take a look at the Kutchog West and then with our Buildings and Grounds Committee, talk about an energy performance contract because we have had some discussions about some other items. Certain lighting and things like that, and perhaps consider the boilers along with that down the road.
Yeah, package it all together.
Okay. Let's keep moving on.
Next one, Frank? Okay, so here we're talking about the front fascia at the Manitouk High School. You've seen it. We've, we've been around it. It's currently in pretty poor condition. Some of it is rotting. Some of it has fallen off. We're looking to repair or replace some of that. The problem with this type of project is that there is, you do have to do abatement of asbestos, you know, and there's a removal disposal costs of lead paint. There's air quality testing to do and so on. You'd also need SED approval. The timeline is really anytime summertime would be the best and that it's not recommended at this time from our architect to, to really be very difficult to do in phases. Where do you stop once you start is kind of the, the conversation I've had with Mr. Grillo is at what point can you stop without, you know, being in the middle of the project somewhere? And then anytime you do stop, keep in mind, when you start again, you have to redo air quality testing, bring in the abatement individuals and and company, redo the, the lead paint removal. So it's, it's again, it's another cost associated with it instead of a one-time deal. The price tags have, it's 814,000. And it's a priority just because something has to be done there. The question mark is because it is a historical landmark, does it have to be repaired to be, look exactly like it looks right now? And what do you have to do to take on this project? So we know something has to be done because of the, the, the way, the way it stands right now. But the question mark is, what do you do?
This is George Haas. This estimate of 814, is that on the high side or they're still on some unanswered questions that where this number could go up higher?
That number comes directly from our architect based on his cost estimates and, you know, what, what he has. So I can't really speak to all that. I do have a list of items that are included in that. I don't know if you have that in an email, some of those documents from Mr. Grillo, but that's the number he comes up with.
Yeah, I, I, you, you just made the comment about the historic aspect. And I was just wondering if this number includes building it just the way it is now with historic purposes?
Right. I believe it is, it, yes, this number is the replace and repair to look exactly like it looks right now. You know, to put it right back to what it, what it has always looked like. So I'm not sure if you can change that.
Greg, I, I think you're right there, Greg. It includes the, the
Yes, it does.
If you could get us the breakdown, if, if Grillo had the breakdown, and Grillo's price goes back several years, if I remember. We had looked at this several years ago. If you could get us the breakdown for the different aspects of the project, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Kelly, the last quote where this came from, the 814,000, that was about two months ago from Mr. Grillo. Is that correct or was it longer?
Probably like November, yes.
Okay.
But Greg, I think he quoted that off of work he had done several years ago.
Okay.
Greg, this is
I'd like to see the, the breakdown for the different aspects of the project.
Sure.
And I, I'm, I think I'm a little remiss myself. I've been meaning to talk to some other outfits about what they would do to try and do some of that work, such as building supply.
Yes.
As I, I think I've mentioned it before, a project of that scope, if they had their signs out front that they were helping do it, it'd be a good advertisement for them. And then some other, one or two other local companies that might well help us do this. I will try and reach out to them.
Frank, did you get to speak to Mr. Grillo about the breakdown?
Did, this is Greg. Did you say Greg or Frank?
Frank.
So Greg is correct. The, it was about two months ago, two or three months ago where we actually got this breakdown. We met with, I didn't like speak to John about what was included and agree with kind of everything that Greg had said. But with that said, I suspect that what Doug is saying is correct because this had been talked about in the past. The numbers were extremely similar. um were extremely similar, so maybe the cost didn't change, or perhaps his estimates were based on what he had already done about two years ago. So uh that's kind of the answer is like I I think it may be based off of what was done a couple of years ago.
Right, again, I think by Thursday we're gonna need a little more information make some decisions about this, whether it's done in phases or you know, there are suggestions about the whole project in terms of cost effectiveness of if you're working on removing the lead paint and asbestos. Is it better to be done at one time or are you just adding additional cost if you're breaking it down?
Uh Brian, I have a follow-up. Um because I because of high costs, we ever get a second opinion from another architect? I'm not disputing what Mr. Grillo um numbers are, but and he's been our longtime architect, but is it customary to get a second architectural opinion?
Brian, a lot of times like this is this hard and soft number on this. Once they go out to bid and you actually have vendors putting in bids, it could be much lower. That's that's a number he's putting up. It's sort of like what you get with the turf field and the air conditions and the doors. He comes up with a price that he feels like would cover the district. But once we go out to bid, those numbers could come in much lower.
Okay, I got it. Thank you. Thanks, Tom.
Uh um the the other thing we're looking at. Well, we want to do something immediately on on this. The alternative is to do some uh patchwork for this coming year. Um some painting. Maybe maybe a little bit of restored wood. I don't know, but but it it should at the very least. We we need some some painting there. I think uh one of you guys, um you or Greg, somebody had mentioned something in the neighborhood of fifty thousand.
It was a a painting company that did it in years past. They're on contract. Um don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's mid fifties, fifty-two, fifty-four thousand to do the hole. You know, and that could get you a couple of years. I think it was last done five years ago. Because the wood's in such bad shape, it's really not holding the paint like it would if it was newer.
So so that's that's the alternative is that we could spend fifty-something currently. But that's that's we still need to spend something considerably more in the next two or three years.
I I sure hate to throw the fifty thousand away when we know we're gonna have to do this anyway.
I I don't disagree with you, Greg, but I I am I am worried somewhat on the economy and and the taxpayer.
Yeah, so.
But you make a good point.
Frank, can you actually just tell uh the board and the public how much money is in the capital reserve right now?
Sure. So right now we have we have as as of now, we have approximately like two and a half million dollars. Um so at the end of this year, if we fund again the seven fifty, we're gonna be up to about three point three um for the summertime.
Okay, and I I believe it is expected that uh although I know it's very early that our fund balance could reach the seven fifty, whether we put that all in the capital reserve or start a repair reserve, correct?
Correct. I I would I would say it's it's um it's safe to assume that there um we will fund it um for the full seven fifty.
And still be able to uh fund a repair reserve?
Yes, not maybe. It depends on how much we're talking in terms of funding. We 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 should still be able to fund another reserve. Um I can't guarantee you at this time that it would be up to that same level, but it would we would still have money to to um yeah, to fund another reserve. It wouldn't prohibit us.
So you you are saying that we may have enough excess funds from this current year that that could be used to cover this. Close to it.
Close to it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Greg, can we move to the athletic field renovation?
Sure. So we're talking about the Manitok Athletic Field renovation at the Manitok High School. This would be on the north side of the um auxiliary gym. The project renovation would include about a hundred fifty-two thousand square feet and within the project, there is about thirty thousand square feet of unplayable surface that is closest to the auxiliary gym. Um the other hundred twenty-two thousand square feet is playable, but really it's so there's so much undulation within that um that the recommendation would be to uh level that playing field and resurface it, grade it out, resurface it so that it's flat once a um not once again for the first time. Um we currently have a a baseball, it's the baseball outfield and it's the JV soccer field. Um if we could level that playing surface and grade it out, we could move the fields actually utilize that extra thirty thousand square feet. And with that, um I may be able to move teams around during the season or, you know, every other season so that we can rest different areas and get our turf growth back. Um it just gives us a little more ability with that extra thirty thousand square feet of playable surface. With that, I might also be able to, I'm not saying we will. I have to look at it a little more closely and look at um spacing and safety. But I suppose it could be quite possible to bring back our junior high lacrosse teams of boys and girls and be able to put them at the high school for practices. The description of this is, I don't know if you have a picture of it, but I have several big um blueprints and topo map topographic maps of this. Um there's an engineer's estimate and there's a quote on this. Um so I don't know if you have those things, but it'll show you the scope, the entire project and the different grades um on that one on that same field. So the grades and elevation range anywhere from twenty-four inches in dips and dives to, you know, two inches. So it's a the the whole grade out there is kind of all over the place. There's some hills and valleys within that field. This really could be done. Should we put it out and want to go forward? You could you could really do it at the end of June and have it back ready to go um by the end of August or wait till after the soccer season um weather permitting and and really do this project sometime in late November. There are additionals within this. You just look at the cost. It could be anywhere from two twenty-five, two twenty-four to three three fifty-five um thousand. And that just depends um what we were to choose to do. You could do it in phases. The initial renovation of the field and leveling of it would keep you closer to the low end. And then over time, you create a a beautification of it. You know, maybe you add a knee wall, some fencing, some plantings um and really make it look like a uh an athletic facility, if you will. Um I put it as a high priority because it is it it impacts kids where you'll see some of our other things don't. Their infrastructure, they're uh as far as buildings and facilities, they're not impactful to children. They are necessary, so I'm not saying they're not necessary, but um are there any questions on the athletic field renovation?
Greg, this is George Haas.
Yes.
From a safety standpoint, is is this needed to the safety of the kids playing on the field? Is it? Are you talking holes and things that need to be fearful of?
There is some feedback there, George, so I can't really hear you.
Are there any safety issues? Um are there holes? Are there things with the kids playing on these fields? There's a risk of getting hurt?
Um, well, there there is not. But that's why I don't use the thirty thousand square feet that I've indicated in here because should I put fields in there, then there definitely would be a safety problem, a safety concern. So that's thirty thousand square feet right behind the building of about seventy feet wide um by about three hundred and fifty feet that I can't use for that reason. Um we do use it for um recess, so it is, you know, that it is used as like a small recess space for junior high during lunch, but we don't participate in in practice or games on it because of that reason.
Thank you.
Greg, I have a question. This is Jenny Anderson.
Yes.
Um so what's in order for the kids to use all the fields and um make them acceptable, that's the field renovation would be first. But everything else says the plantings, the outdoor lining, lighting, that's extra. And it could be broken up where we could only do what's necessary for that renovation. Could this be broken up?
Absolutely. I think the first thing you want to look at is the the actual field renovation itself. So number one, we let's make no mistake, the grading of that field to a level surface is number one priority, most important. The rest of it is what is our um I guess, what is our vision of what we want our athletic arena to look like? So is it important for us to have some plantings and a beautification of that space? Or are we good with it just being flat? So I think um you know, those are the decisions that we we would make. But that's why I have it uh the cost estimates at the low end. I think you can get it around two twenty-four. Um that is an estimate that I have to just grade that location and get it into playable um condition.
Okay, and just one more question, just those numbers, um the two twenty-four, where is that coming from? Is that the architects or?
So you have an engineers, you have an engineer's quote and then you have an actual um you you'll see one. I don't know if you have it. Um you'll see a quote from a vendor who has the contract, the state contract um who who came out and looked at the project and gave a quote of the project itself.
Would we be able to get other quotes?
Absolutely, you could bid it. I I would recommend that if you did put it out uh or if you did accept this as a project, you you definitely would bid that.
Okay, so it wouldn't okay automatically go to these original plans or quotes?
No.
Okay.
You could go with the one quote because it's directly off of contract and you would not have to bid it um because you could use that. But um you may want to bid it.
Okay, thank you.
All the board members, um I sent you um a copy of the engineer's report that you can reference.
The Greg, uh I have several issues with this as as you realize. One of which is we have not seen very good um drawings of this field of the work proposed work. I you gave me a copy, but it's 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 terrible. It's very hard to read. Uh you want us to spend this kind of money, I would expect to have something much much better. Going off the copy that you did give us or give me, I should say. I had a local landscaper look at it. He would do sixty thousand square feet where you have the field roughly where you have the proposed playing field. Uh he would do sixty thousand square feet there. Grade it, fill it and reseed it for sixty thousand. And if you wanted sod, if we wanted sod, uh he said it would be ninety thousand. And that would that give you that playing field, which would level that area much much better. It's not including drainage and I'm not sure we need drainage there by the building because we already have water running off now. That that seems to be okay. But that's just another idea. The the ideas that again, as our enrollment has reduced so much, do we need more fields? And where are the these these kids? Greg, right now I'm playing up west. Is is that it?
Uh west is still used for the girls lacrosse. It's the girls lacrosse location, correct?
Who would who would be using this new field that you could use?
It's the outfield of the baseball field. It's the JV soccer field. And if we could open up the space for the other thirty thousand and make it playable, I'm thinking that I could bring back a junior high girls or boys lacrosse team and give them a space for practice.
Looking at the and there again, maybe maybe the board should go out there, at least the building graphs could go out there and if you get us better plan. But looking at the property, I've been there several times. The worst I mean is they are near the building where you have a proposed ball field, not a soccer field, lacrosse field, I should say, not a baseball field. Doctor Lacrosse Field near the building. Yes, that is that could well be leveled much better. We need to do the, do we need to do the baseball outfield? I don't know. And then you're talking about a a wall and the wall's gonna need a fence, I'm sure. I I think we're getting more than we we might need at this time.
Uh that's a it's a proposal to the Board of Education. It's uh something that you can take a look at a certain um as far as the topographic map that you might have. Um I'm not sure if you do have one or which one you have, but I do have several copies that are uh about forty by forty inches by twenty-eight inches. So the the large maps um that you can look at, I do have them.
That would be better, Greg. Sure.
Yeah, uh we're currently um Doug was referencing the the attachments that you sent me. So you know, they're just on regular nine by thirteen paper at this point.
I was at Greg's office. That's all he had.
Yeah, but now I have the I have the big, big blueprints like uh you would see in the in the business office.
Um can we just just Greg on this engineer's estimate?
Yeah.
If we were just to uh make the what we'll call like essential or needed renovations of the field, which of those items on that engineer's list, if you have it in front of you, would be required? You don't have it in front of you. I sent you an email.
No, I have it. I have it right here. Without going over it initially with the engineer, it'd be hard for me to say which ones. So but we know that the there is a question mark on the multi the the drainage system. So we're not gonna really know whether the forty thousand dollar estimated there is needed or not. Um you know, there's there's thirty-three thousand dollars for unclassified excavation and grading. That's a ballpark. I'm not really exactly sure on that. And then some of your other, one of your other large costs is seventy-three thousand dollars for sod. Depending on the time of year, we might be able to seed that. So you know, that number could fluctuate a lot as well.
And what about the item, the multipurpose uh field and surrounding or topsoil layer? That wouldn't be for the direct field itself. That would be for the surrounding area?
That's that is both for the what did we have to do is dig out and then bring in four inches of of clean topsoil. And that's what you would either put your sod on or or grow your new material on. So.
That's a need.
That one's gonna that one would stay, but there are some significant um question marks in here. Do you have the quote as well as the engineer's estimate? Does the board have that?
Yes.
So you have a quote of this. So it's interesting that the engineer's estimate has the dollar figure of three fifty-five, but the actual quote from the vendor to do the work is two twenty-four. So similar to when you look at the fascia and what Tom was talking about and Frank, you have a quote or or an engineer or architect spec eight hundred and fourteen. But you actually have a quote of significantly less. So I think you're seeing the same thing. That's why I sent them. That's your comparison. So that quote. So that quote you see is based off the engineer's. Construction. I don't know.
Yeah, and Greg, this is Frank, just to jump in and add to that point. And I think it is important to stress that. And Tom had mentioned, brought this up before, that a lot of this has not, these are all public works projects, so they're going to go out to bid. Unless we find a specific, um, you know, Suffolk County contract to go off of, or to use something that has already been bid before. So. These are all going to be estimates. Um, and some, like John Grillo, I think his estimates, what you can look at those as safe. Uh, because he's been doing it for a long time and kind of like understands that. Once this goes out to the voters, we can't, you know, overspend it. So I think his are pretty safe. Uh, but a lot of these are gonna be um, estimated until we bid out the projects and have the exact plans um, approved. By uh, State Ed as well. So there's gonna be a a little bit of fluctuation in the numbers here.
Frank, I'm I'm sorry, we had a little confusion. Yeah, I didn't follow what you just said, right?
So I I was, Doug, I was just reiterating that um, Greg, I was talking a little bit about the difference um, in the engineer's cost estimates. And I just wanted to reiterate again that um, all of these projects are gonna be public works projects. So even though we do get estimates from, say, different vendors come up with plans, like um, if we were to move forward with one of these. The project is going to have to be bid out um, based on the specifications of our plan with State Ed. Um, so that process could generate um, different, like, actual costs and kind of what we're proposing here. I would say like what John, when we get cost estimates from him, I think his, you can view as relatively safe. Because he understands kind of, he builds in, I think, a lot of the costs that he would anticipate. Because he knows that we can't end up going over what we had asked the voters to spend on the project. So um, there is gonna be a lot of fluctuation kind of in the cost. Because a lot of the detailed work and that is required for these public works projects haven't taken place yet. Um, nor should they. They should come after, after the fact. But just something to keep in mind with the ranges.
Okay.
Any questions on the field renovation?
Any possibility of of reducing the scope of it, Greg?
Anything's possible, Doug. I will tell you that in phases, that. I will be presenting this for the centerfield next year.
You have more work that could be done to those fields, is that what you're saying?
Absolutely. Yes.
Let's move on to the high school steam wing.
Jill, I just had a question. Are we voting today on what was gonna, is gonna be put up for a vote? Or will we have another discussion on these capital reserve projects?
Well, the on Thursday's meeting will be the finalization of the entire budget, and anything within the budget is up for discussion at that point in time. And um, but we really need some guidance today. On where the board is leaning on these projects today.
On the capital reserve ones.
Correct. But again, can be discussed and or changed on Thursday. The high school steam wing, Greg?
Okay, go ahead, Frank, move us over. The high school steam. Sorry, can I kick the high school steam wing to Jill or Sean? This is one I'm not real familiar with.
Sure, sure. Do you want to take it or you want me to do it?
Yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
Um, again, this is something that we really just want to put on the board's radar. This is not a a project that we would. Instead of doing next year, but it's something that we want to begin to investigate. Um, you know, when you go in there now. You know, we're doing our traditional courses out of there, um, some tech metal. Um, the wood shop is the wood shop, Steve Lavigno with the mechanical drawing. Um, but as we're kind of moving into, you know, more steam-like activities, computer-based. Um, robotics and things like that. Um, you know, it's kind of, we're tripping over each other in that. In that space. And so, you know, we still, like, in the middle of the floor, we still have the old car lift. We have welding equipment, which we're now using again, which is great. Um, but the whole space, we need to investigate whether we want to reconfigure the space we have. Um, again, that's a separate type of building. That's, you know, all one big structure that was framed out inside. So we could move things around inside and look at restructuring things, or we could do an add-on. Um, but I really just want to put that on the board's radar and begin to look like, at it as, you know, a project we would do. You know, maybe two years out. Um, there's, there's a lot of homework still to be done with it.
And so, um, Mr. Grillo, um, actually did a walkthrough with me last year of this area with just some preliminary discussions. And, you know, minimally, this would be a two hundred thousand dollar redo with, in terms of upgrading some electrical. Um, redoing the floor area that Sean mentioned with the car lift and just some ventilation and things like that. Um, we would like to visit some other districts where they have already upgraded some of their steam wings. And really take a look at some of the possibilities. And, you know, what is the way that we can both upgrade and be financially prudent? Um, but safety minded in this project. So we want to put, as Mr. Petretti said, put it on your radar and really take a look at this to be considered. You know, perhaps next year.
Yeah, this is Brian. I'm very excited about this prospect. Uh, neighboring districts have their own individual programs, and I think Matatech could have their individual programs. Many of our young men, the men, the young men that restored the tractor, I think this would be ideal for them. Um, this is really part of our educational uh, history, and it it's nice to see a potential return to that. And um, some kids can go to college, some kids, we also need plumbers and mechanics too. So. Anything that, it helps that I I I fully back.
Yeah, I, and Anderson, I agree with Brian. I mean, I, in my walkthroughs, I've seen those areas. Um, it definitely needs improvement.
Okay, yeah, we would agree. Next item is the pole barn for Kachog East.
We got the south corner of the parking lot of Kachog East to create a storage um, space for equipment. Such as the tractor, the gator, some trucks. Um, have an outdoor workspace, um, which and would also help us to limit the trailering of equipment. Mostly mowers and things to Kachog East. Um. Basically, what we've done is we've removed, I think there's one container left at Kachog East. Um, one of those container trailers, but we removed the majority of those, and those were our outdoor. That was our outdoor storage at that, at that area. The proposal is for the exact replica of the barn that was built at the high school. It's a forty-two by sixty-foot. Three-bay Morton building. Um, with that, there is no slab, no water, no heat, no electric. Um, and we would need SED approval. The, you can really do this at any particular time. Um, maybe you look at downsizing the scale um, of the project. We know that we have the, what it cost us for the pole barn at the high school was. And a hundred and eighty-four thousand, or a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And that was um, for the three-bay forty-two by sixty. Um, but it did not include a floor, no electric, water, or heat. Um, we do have an estimate of around two hundred and twenty-five thousand based on the number. Um, that we spent to get our current barn to where it is now. Um, the current barn at the high school has a slab, has some electric, it still has no heat or water. Um, we think, based on what we did spend there in the slab and electric, and adding some heat and water to that location. Um, but that size building would put you around two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, it is a lower priority due to the fact that it doesn't directly impact kids. But um, again, it's another one of those things that, you know, certainly, certainly there is a need, but there might be. As Mr. Cooper um, talked about in the athletic field renovation, a downscaling, there may be a downscaling of the size of the um, barn as well. Any questions?
Comments?
Go ahead.
Um, Greg, uh. The, the, the cost of it to me is. Is way too high.
What?
The, the cost.
Of what?
And I, I don't know why. I'd like to see a breakdown of the cost of the one in Matatech. Why, why did it cost so much? That, that same building. I can typically have built on my phone. Um, seven-five or thirty thousand.
I can get the pizza done at the high school for a hundred and fifty.
Hold on a minute, Greg, go ahead.
Why this would be another hundred thousand or more? Just would like to see the, the breakdown of the cost for the one we did at Matatech.
Mr. Kelly, do you have that paperwork?
I, I have it on me. Yes, I can uh, provide that to the board. Um, it was the same pole barn that we put at the high school, Doug. Um, that was from Morton. Um, I think his name is Bill Kelly. He was the one that did the work. He came out and uh, reestimated it. And the only thing we need to do would be obviously add the floor. We had a different company come in after they were done and do the cement flooring. And there is no heat, as Mr. Ormit stated, no heat or electric. Um, so we definitely like to have electric. And heat, if we're gonna be working on equipment during the uh, snowstorms. Yeah, that is a hard number that we got from him, and I have that estimate.
It's um, I, I strongly support putting a building up at, at East, assuming they they would like it. Uh. The size of it. Seen as, as the one at Matatech is filled up already, we have that full. And I, I think we still have some equipment outside. I would, I would rather not see this go smaller, but we can, sure. But it's the, the underlying cost, uh, essentially a hundred and fifty thousand without a floor, without electric, without heat. I, I think is a. Hundred thousand or more too high. Yes, we can go smaller and save some. But the, the underlying cost, um, I, that's why I'd like to see just why it costs so much. The, the whole purpose of a pole barn is that they're, they're cost-effective to build, relatively easy to build. Uh, there are a lot of other companies in Pennsylvania right now. Whether they'll come out here, uh, remains to be seen.
And again, this would need SED approval, which, you know, and the architect in those pieces, unfortunately, you know, that. That drives up the cost a little bit.
I would, um. You know, maybe you know, Frank, uh. We, we apply for a building permit for it. Is there a timeframe that it must be built by? In other words, if we applied for a building permit. And, and had it, whether we build it next year, the year after, or the year after that, is that okay?
It depends where you're gonna put the project too. So if you're going out for voter approval and, you know, and putting it in the capital reserve. I think we'd have to look at the language in terms of the completion date. And then you'd also have to be mindful, if you went out to the public and the public approved it. And you didn't do it right away, you certainly couldn't expend, you know, that money in the capital reserve, and it would just sit there. For that project until the board in time either decided to do the project or took it off the list. Right, Greg?
Yeah, I would agree.
I would agree with that, Jill, and and I would just, I would just add that, um, you know, if you were to say that. Late, um, you know, it's always gonna be cheaper to do it today than it is gonna be to do it in three, four, or five years from now, for the most part. So. I would say that if we were going to do it and go before the voters. Um, we would want to do it relatively sooner rather than later after that. Um, because otherwise, we would have to then go back to the voters again to, um, if costs have gone up, to ask for more money or to simply. Use the money and not do the project. Either way, we would have to um, go back to the voters.
I was, I was thinking, Frank, more from the perspective of. Not going through the capital reserve. We just did it. Is there, if, if, once we have a building permit from Albany, is there a time span by which we have to use it, do it? That, that, that's all.
Yeah, so in, in this item, I, I think, um, our team here would recommend that this would be something that could be added. Possibly to the repair reserve. Right, Frank, putting this, or is this my wrong? It's a new, new structure, right?
Correct. We wouldn't be able to add a new pole barn. Uh, what we could do if, like, what you could do if we have like an existing structure, you can like, uh, replace an existing structure. Um, so like, you know, an existing building, we could rehab it or replace it, but you can't add something new under the repair reserve.
Right, and those, um, I guess, storage containers or things like that, would, would that be considered an existing structure? Or now, those are just removable?
I, I wouldn't think, I think that's pushing it to turn the storage containers into like a, you know, a new pole barn, but.
That's what I figured. Okay, I just wanted to make it clear.
Yeah.
Guys, I don't, I don't know how bad East would like a building. At this money, I would, I would like to not rush into it personally.
Okay, well, like Frank said, it's not a priority right now, but it's something that we certainly could use. And I think, again, all of these items, we're trying to be mindful, that we protect equipment. That, you know, we continue to move forward, you know, preserving the items that we have expended and also work efficiently. And the more items that, you know, we can do when doing the work inside, we have a, a really nice maintenance team right now that is doing some in-house work rather than. Farming out some of the work. It is not a need for the school year, but it's something that we should definitely consider in the future. Okay, Greg, can you move on to? The high school multipurpose room. Actually, I'm gonna let Sean speak to this.
Uh, what? I'm here. Um, you know, again, this is a, a project that we wanted to move the home act room. Um, down to one of the art rooms in the main hallway. Um, and utilize it for a couple of different things, you know, courses being one of them. Really, the costs that are coming in are, as usual, way higher than anticipated. Um, and so it has us looking at redoing the room up there, um, where it is. Uh, the ventilation's in place. Um, we could redo the cabinets, put some new countertops in, um, update the appliances. And the cost will come in, you know, much more reasonable um, than in moving the room downstairs uh, into the main hallway. Um, so.
Yeah, so again, um, this is a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project to use it again as a multipurpose room. We definitely felt like taking a look at a project like this would really add it, be a nice enhancement to the high school. And again, many uh, people would take, be able to take advantage of this, whether it be in the art department. Family and consumer science, tech department, as well as, you know, just for some extracurricular activities. Many districts have moved to these multipurpose rooms because they get a lot of use out of them. With that said, it is a hundred and sixty thousand price tag. And we can do the kitchen on the second floor for a thirty thousand, which is currently in the budget. That item, it might, we might reduce it like down to twenty-eight, but it's already in our budget to just refurbish. The family consumer science room. So again, this is a need. Um, we can do it for, you know, continue with our coursework for the family and consumer science room. But it is something to definitely litter down the road, just because of the usage of the room.
Yeah.
I had a question. This is Jenny Anderson. Um, I know at the beginning of the year, one of our community members had brought up a concern about, I believe it was the culinary class. Um, the. Um, the, the thirty thousand, um, that is already in the budget, would that take care of that need?
Yeah, this is what we're talking about, the refurbishment, as we spoke about last year. Um, that the cabinets would be recer, uh, either painted and kind of just spiffed up a bit. Um, that we would get new appliances for that room and, uh, you know, just kind of do like a makeover in terms of that room. And yes, it would address that.
And so that's not this one hundred and sixty thousand proposal? This is, that's the thirty thousand?
Well, that's the thirty thousand, but if we chose not to do the thirty thousand and did the hundred and sixty, yes, the culinary classes, the family consumer science would use the multipurpose room.
Okay, thank you.
Which plan, Doug Cooper, uh, which plan, Jill, would, Sean, whoever, would get the most use? Which plan would benefit the most kids?
Well, I, I think moving it down to the main hallway would, um, you know, it, it provide more access, you know, and again, that's a hallway where we run junior and senior high school classes out of. You know, we're really, we're not at a spot though, where it's not like I'm going to hire a, a home and careers teacher to, to run electives in the high school of cooking and stuff like that. I don't think I'm at that point. Student interest is building. Um, the room's getting more used than it, it has, you know, since the Seal Krupsky days. You know, uh, of course, it, it's a nice one. I would, I would love to see it in the, in the main hallway. I think it would be a nice addition there. Um, access to the community, so forth and so on, but really for our needs, I can, you know, I'm, I'm comfortable with the redoing of the room where we have it now, continuing to build interest, and then maybe looking at it in the future to move it.
We definitely get way more usage just because of where the location currently is. That room is just going to be used, the thirty thousand is just going to be used for the junior high family consumer science class. We have one elective that runs, I think, Sean, every other day for the culinary chemistry, and it's not all done in that room. So those are the really only classes that are meeting in that space right now, as well as there's an after-school club. So.
If you, if we broke it down to the number of kids that would use that room for, for three thousand dollars, how many kids would use it if we ran a hundred and fifty thousand downstairs? How many more kids would use it? Would they come in close? That was a great question, one way of looking at it.
I think you're probably right, Doug. It would probably come in close, if not deeper, because of the number of students taking that culinary class right now. It's so minimal.
So the, the, the cost per student, the, the cost per student is higher upstairs because there's very few students.
Yeah, I, I don't know the exact answer.
Is, is what you'd expect. Is, is Sean, would you agree?
Um, it, it, it's a guestimate, Doug, but you're going to see, you know, certainly you're going to see increased use if it's in the main hallway. Um, you know, right now, it's all of our seventh graders. They rotate through there, you know, every quarter. Um, you know, it's kids in, in the, the cooking club and, uh, you know, and then that one elective. Um, you know, we can anticipate the increased use if we moved it downstairs, but I, I, I can't give you a solid number on what that would exactly look like.
I think it's the.
And the objective is to move the, the junior and senior high school health education courses through that room multiple times a day too, so. But they don't have that space right now.
Go ahead, Jen.
This is a question. Um, if we were to choose the thirty thousand and renovate the upstairs, but then in the future do a multipurpose room, what would happen to the thirty thousand renovation? Would we would it be not used or would it be, um, still used? And so I'm just trying to think of down the line, like putting resources in where that we don't have to go back and rip things out.
So it, it would just remain as is. Jennifer, um, I can't, it would, as Sean is saying, that, you know, whether we see, start to see increased requests for some culinary classes and things like that. No, I don't, once you do a redesign of a multipurpose room with high-top tables and, you know, workspaces and, you know, ovens and, you know, microwaves right there where they're accessible for each, you know, kind of like if you see the TV shows and stuff like that, they're right there for the kids. You know, everybody's going to want to use the new upgraded room downstairs. But if it's a multipurpose room, we would have to look at what are the needs of the classes and who needs the room, and that's really more of a scheduling issue. Um, I do see a multipurpose room can be accessible to a steam class as well. So if we're looking at that wing, the steam wing, and then also looking at a multipurpose room. The other thing is with the multipurpose room, it's a really nice add for the community, and the community comes in, you know, as our community partners in some adult education classes or things like that. You know, this is a school district and other people can use those facilities as well.
Yeah, I look at it too, like, we, we host the wrestling tournament, so the Booster Club would be able to use that facility for the food that they put on at that point in time. And just, you know, really making it more accessible to more groups, you know?
I also think for a special education population, you know, it's a really nice advantage just in terms of the space of that other room. And there's like some opportunities for some life skills classes and things in there.
Jill, is your recommendation to do it now?
Jill, this is George Hoss. If, if we're to build this, um, room for a hundred and sixty thousand, what would we do with the upstairs room?
Greg, you want to talk a little bit to that? Or Sean?
Yeah, I could. I mean, George, I, I have a vision of where I would like to gut that room. Um, you know, that the stuff in there is outdated and get rid of it. And then I'd like to make it, you know, a unique teaching space. It's, it's right next to the TV studio, um, which makes it convenient, but where I'd like to use it for possibly our AP seminar class. You know, where you, you have different workstations for kids. Um, you know, where they can work on presentations, maybe put cameras in there. Um, you know, we saw some interesting stuff when we took our visit to Plainview Old Bethpage, and they had some unique learning um, environments for their, for their AP, um, seminar class. And so that, that's my immediate vision for it, is that I would like to utilize it, you know, put some couches and different types of seating in there. Um, but you know, that's probably what I would do with that room.
Okay, thank you.
Tom Kelly, though, if, if I'm correct, though, if we did do a renovation of the upstairs room, there is probably some additional costs, uh, the removal of some items or perhaps some electrical units and things like that, Tom?
Correct. You have some gas lines and some other things that need to be addressed, correct.
Can that be done in-house?
Um, some of it, yes, Jill, but some of it has to be probably, uh, licensed electricians and plumbers.
The, Jill, that if we renovated it, meaning the use this year as opposed to renovating it to what Sean said?
No, I mean, the re, the renovation in terms of gutting it, like Sean's saying, that would have some.
We're, we're doing the, the, what's proposed in the budget for this year is in-house with our guys, um, painting and doing the cabinetry work and everything that's not happening outside there, that's us doing it in-house and the purchase of a new appliances. But if we did a rip, uh, down the road, if we decide to move downstairs and did a, a rip and removed everything, we would have to, uh, have the expense, we can do the removal, but we'd probably have the expense of bringing in a licensed plumber and electrician in to, uh, remove the wiring and the gas lines.
Guys, I'll put my extension. If the downstairs room is going to be used as much as what I hear, Greg's going to be running some of his classes through it. Um, some of the other programs, I, I would, I could support that. Makes, from a, from a dial up a student, as I've said before, it makes more sense than forty, forty thousand upstairs that only a few kids are going to use. And in the long term, that the, John could do one of his projects up there, that, it all makes sense.
I agree with Doug.
Barbara wanted to comment.
Jill, just give us your opinion on it. You know, what are you leaning towards?
I mean, if we had the funds, honestly, I would lean toward the high school multipurpose, only knowing how much accessibility it has for so many different organizations. And the location, the location is the key part of that. It is near the steam wing, it is near the main hallway, it's near the gym. It's can be used for health and athletics, it can be used for the culinary program. Upstairs is just your science wing. On the other side of the building, yes, it's going to be, you know, we of course would redo it nicely for the, you know, the seventh grade ex kids, and of course, the electives, but, I mean, if you had the funds to do it, we get so much more out of it.
And Barbara, the thing I'd like you to, to envision as well too with this project is if, when you look at that main hallway, you know, we now have our gymnasium, we have an art room, we have our wellness center, and we have the computer lab where we're doing, um, you know, programming and stuff like that. So to add, add that, you know, to that hallway, it's, you know, that's like the heart of your building, and I just think it, it just creates a great message and creates a great environment, you know, for the school.
Jill, this is Brian. I agree with what Tom just said. That was the hope, um, that we invested in for the wellness center, and I think the kids really had taken advantage of it. I think the staff is taking advantage of it. And that's my educational hope for this new base. And just as an alum of this illustrious school, I was taught home ec in that room thirty years ago, and it's the same furniture thirty years ago. So I think it's time for some upgrades, and because of the way we planned the budget, we have the, the ability to do it. So I say the new multipurpose room is, is a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, so I do want to just, though, if this is put into the capital reserve, this requires SED approval, it is filing, you know, with state education department, it is architectural plans and things like that. So I want to be clear that we would still be running for next school year, those electives out of that older, um, you know, kitchen up there. It would not be, you know, hit the ground running in September, we're going to have this new, we'd be probably one year out from running those courses upstairs. And of course, we can try to do whatever we can to just continue to, you know, mitigate the, some of the old things in there, but I'm not going to put new appliances up there and then do this.
What, what if we took some of Frank's fund balance and spent it for this year? Put it into next year? Could we do it over the summer?
No.
SED.
No.
Yeah, you need SED.
No, we not, we could not be with all the plans in the timeline right now. I, I just want to clear that, again, continue maintaining. I mean, we ran Thanksgiving, we had a Thanksgiving festival in that kitchen, and everyone was happy.
Yeah.
Yes, it's needed. Okay, can we move on to the next item? Oh, wait, we're at the end of the items. Okay, so at this point, I just really need the board, um, to give us some guidance on their priorities for these items, if you want to propose any capital reserve projects. I also want to be mindful that we could never possibly do all of these items. Even if we had all the money in the world, we could not do them in one school year. There's a lot of paperwork that goes behind this. There's a lot of funding, there's a lot of, with the architect. There's a lot of back and forth in getting quotes, and whether you go out to bid or you take it off state contract where things have already been vetted. So just watching the board and making the decision in terms of what's doable in one year. Plus, we're just finishing up projects from this school year. Um, although those projects are moving along and we hope to have them done by the fall, we would just be starting over again in terms of the paperwork process of this. Greg, I don't know if you want to add anything?
No, I think, I think that's, um, well said. It's, the, the projects themselves are, you know, span a few years. So when you think in terms of things that are up and done, like, like the pole barn, um, the energy performance contract, those really aren't done from like a district operations perspective, like even though you see the product, like there's still ongoing like, um, filings related to it. And, um, so you have to think of it in kind of phases, like how many you can kind of juggle, um, at one time for the full lifecycle of the project. Um, and then the only other thing I would say is with, um, the projects like the multipurpose room, um, I, I would want to emphasize too, that if we are going to do something, we should get, uh, because we are going to have to put, you know, an estimated cost up there that we'd want to kind of touch base with um, our architect, like ASAP, if that was something that was going to go on, um, you know, legal notice on Thursday, um, because some, like, you'd want to make that, we can't, once we set that amount, like, really exceed it. So that'll be something we'd want to run through him, um, sooner rather than later.
Jill, this is George Hoss. Having said what you, you just said, uh, how, how many projects are we talking about?
Uh, well, again, I think there, there's some that are a must-do. So the roof project, the Cacho East, I would recommend, I kind of put them in this presentation as a must-do. Some of the boilers, the boiler at Cacho West is a must-do, so that's two twenty-seven plus another ninety-eight. What is that? Three twenty-five?
Yep.
Um, the fascia at the high school, uh,
Those were the ones I was thinking are must-dos.
Right, those are the, to me, those are, now, the other question is, what can go in a repair reserve? You know, the roofs could go in a repair reserve, the, um, boiler could go in a repair reserve. So if you didn't want to take it out of the capital and you wanted to set the capital more aside for the fascia at the high school, you could possibly put one of these in a repair reserve. You know, we have to have a repair reserve, but as Frank is saying, you know, we can establish that with any, um, fund balance.
Could that be the high school fascia?
No, the repair, the high school fascia is too much money for a repair reserve. We wouldn't have that kind of funding. But some of the smaller projects could go in a repair reserve. Frank, uh, go correct me if I'm wrong in any of this stuff.
No, that's correct.
Frank, the roof for two hundred and twenty-seven thousand and the boiler for hungry, they both go in a repair reserve.
That's correct. What I would say, though, with the repair reserve, if we're doing, um, if we are gonna, um, with the repair reserve, you don't n- need voter approval to establish a repair reserve. But if we are going to use fund balance, you do need voter approval for that. So I would, I would say that if we are going to do the repairs, or it's something, again, that, um, we would need resolution language um, from our attorneys to send out, um, you know, you'd probably want to do that at the same time on Thursday with any propositions that we're doing, um, in my opinion. But in, in terms of those projects, yeah, that, that's everything correct. Like, you, you would be able to replace or, um, remodel or, or just, or repair any existing, um, item. So the only, almost everything in this presentation would be able to, except for, um, you know, if you were to do like a brand-new pole barn, or if we were to do some type of like, uh, new lighting or something on the athletic field. Those would be like the only things that would be excluded. Everything else, like even this multipurpose room, I think you could do as a repair reserve, because we are, um, we, we already have kind of a home economics room that is in need of being repaired. So this, anything like that, um, you could use the repair reserve funds for.
So any idea how much we would be able to put into a reserve, uh, repair reserve fund this year?
Um, George, I don't want to give, um, uh, an estimate now, because wh- what we're doing is, um, going through each account now and kind of checking what the fund balance is. And we have, although we're largely, we've been doing it and there's an ongoing process, we have a few accounts that are just, like I mentioned before, the health insurance. we have a few accounts that are just, like I mentioned before, the health insurance. There are a few accounts that we're, we're working on reconciling, that there are just such large balances in there that it's going to fluctuate the number a lot. So I'd say, you know, we're a few days away from like giving it like a hard estimate of what a fund balance would look like. But we could put a meaningful amount of money, I suspect, in. So if you looked at last year, kind of our excess fund balance, we were well over a million dollars. I would say that it's safe to assume that we will be over a million dollars. I don't know right now, an exact level, because of that, like I said, we're, we're really working on the reconciliation of those few accounts that are going to drive that number.
But George, hold on one second. So one thing that you could do is, if you're, just say you want to take the roof and the boiler, which come to about three twenty-five, we could say that we're going to ensure that the fund balance goes to that repair reserve to cover that. And then whatever excess goes to the capital reserve fund not to exceed the seven fifty. So if we were less than the seven fifty and the three twenty-five, you wouldn't, you don't have to put seven fifty into the capital. You could put less, you could do six fifty. You could cover your costs or your intended costs for these two projects in a repair reserve. And then if we were short in the excess fund balance, it would only be six fifty hypothetically.
Correct. And one other thing important too, Jill, is that, say you were to establish a repair reserve, you could, so then using it doesn't require separate voter approval. So you, so you're going to the voters once and saying, we want to establish a repair reserve using fund balance. Let's, you know, let's say it's a million dollars or whatever we decide, you decide. Then, at which point you wanted to then use the funds, you, you don't need to go back like the capital project every time to do a separate proposition. So you would just have, you know, a hearing, say this is our plans, we, we want to work on the boiler, here's what we're going to do, here's how we did it, and then you do it. So it's, it's a little different in terms of like, once, it's, it's really just getting the approval for the funding, not getting approval for each project at the, when you're using a repair reserve.
And the part that, a little bit is, we set it up to move forward this way, and then for whatever reason, it doesn't get voted. And what do we do?
Then you wouldn't, obviously, if you don't put the money for the boiler and the, and the roof projects in, you know, to the capital, then you're not guaranteed to get them done. If the voters don't approve the repair reserve, the repair fund, then yeah, you could, the boiler and the roof.
Would we need voter approval next, next year, you can put more money into the, into the repair reserve? Put more money into it next year?
No, so the attorney will write a proposition to see like, it'll be similar to the capital reserve, like to repair reserve funding through excess fund balance up to a certain amount of money. So no, it, it would be, as, as long as that's voter approved, then you can fund it through excess fund balance over multiple years. So you wouldn't have to go back each year to refund it. And you can use the money and do the projects, you know, as you see fit.
Yeah, so there is a risk, George, in, in the sense that if you put it and, and, you know, expected the community to approve the repair fund, there is a risk that those projects wouldn't get done next year.
It could, it could be a risk that they won't approve the.
Capital reserve.
Capital reserve.
Capital projects either, they can, for the two capital projects, they can vote that, that community either vote in favor or they could also vote that down in the other space as well.
Yeah, but I, you know, I don't see anyone voting down some of these repair jobs, because they, they need to be done.
Yeah, and that's just to use the funding as well. So we could fund some of these things from the general fund as well. But to use the capital reserve funds and the repair reserve funds, you need, you need that voter approval.
I would recommend, let's try to set up the repair reserve fund for future decisions. And I'd be a little concerned by doing it for, work with what we have to do next year.
Any other thoughts from any other board members?
I feel like we should just, and see what the voters do, give the voters a chance to, you know, approve it. And then if they don't, then we can do a plan B. But for right now, chances are they will, I, I'm thinking.
I mean, this is Jenny Anderson. Whether it's a repair reserve or cap, coming out of the capital reserve, I mean, I think it should be divided up. What's like, what's guiding me is definitely what's needed to maintain buildings and to keep the kids safe. I'm thinking dividing it into three different maybe proposals or propositions. I definitely see the new roofs, the boiler at Kachog West and the fascia as essential. That's where I stand.
Anybody else?
This is Brian. I agree with Doug with his assessment of what's important in terms of the roof and the boiler. And then I agree with your substantive plan, how to deal with it with the repair reserve. And I feel like my only concern is the, the public, the taxpayers having a chance to chime in. Again, as Barbara said, I don't think that they would necessarily disagree that there are, these are important things. But just, I don't know if we could set up a Facebook chime in or a blog or something where the taxpayers can chime in and give their perspective as well.
Right, it's a little under these conditions where the.
I know, yeah, I know, yeah.
We, we don't have that opportunity right now.
Yeah, I know, but I think the taxpayer should have their say as well, that's my belief.
I agree with you, and I, I'm not disputing that, but you have, you as a board of education have to have a final approved budget on Thursday for the notice. I mean, I am hearing that they're going to extend the deadline, but we haven't received that yet.
I, I just think, Jill, you know, this is, this is our first, our discussion on this in detail. I mean, we have two days to make up the decision. I would welcome feedback from the community. I mean, if this goes up for a vote, there definitely is going to, they're going to have the ultimate decision, choice. I don't know if we have enough time to get feedback by Thursday.
Yeah, because just be mindful that this presentation takes twenty-four hours post as well. So this is going to be posted till tomorrow morning, which is Wednesday. You're only essentially giving the, the community twenty-four hours to then, you know, give the board feedback.
But if we were to put projects through the capital reserve fund, then the voters are going to have a say, because they're going to vote yes or no to it.
Correct.
Now, do they access to the information, will they have access before the vote to the information regarding all these projects?
This is already on board docs, so all of this information has already been made public prior to the meeting?
And I would also say another thing, just from a, an operational perspective, that we would still need, so, we still need time in between to actually have our attorneys draft up these resolutions and also, you know, talk, run it by the architect on any final decisions on the, the price that we'd want to put up for Thursday. So there's, there's actually like a lot, like, I, I wouldn't want to leave a decision to, I, I don't want to leave a decision to Thursday morning under the impression that it's like flipping a switch to, to then get it on. So there's going to be, you know, in between coordination with outside parties.
So therefore, my suggestion is that we, having heard all this, we approve it now and then start, start the ball in motion. I don't know how everybody, everybody else maybe could weigh in, but I'm, I'm recommending that we approve it now and then go from there.
Okay, approve what?
Approve what we've just.
The, the roof front piece.
Okay.
The two twenty-seven.
Yep, the roof.
The boiler at West.
Correct. Yeah, I think, go to that point, yeah.
Hi, this is Jenny Anderson. I definitely agree with those three. The athletic field, I see the necessity for the grading. I'm just concerned about the cost between two twenty-four and then what Doug is saying, it could possibly be done at sixty thousand. The pole bar, barn, I just had a question, is the equipment now stored outside?
Yes, for the most part, it's a mix, Jen, some of it's outside, some of it's in little storage units.
So the necessity would be to be able to maintain that equipment by putting it in a barn?
Jennifer, barn there is something I've been encouraged, because they have wanted a barn there for the last twenty-something years. I would put it off for the, the cost of it, I, another year to wait.
Right, that's my concern is the cost.
The, I would, I would gladly wait on that and see if we can.
Sometimes when you wait for construction projects, it's, it's counterintuitive, the price may go up, believe it or not. So we need to strike while the iron is hot. If it's, if we think we need it, we may have to put it through somehow, whether it's through the capital reserve or whether it's through the regular budget. But traditionally, the more you wait, the more things cost when you have a building project.
Yes, Brian, I understand.
And I understand your stick to shot too, I agree. But I think, you know, if we want to do it, we may have to move sooner rather than later, because I think if we move later, it's just, it's going to be fifty thousand dollars more, because the cost of everything is going to go up, all the, all the supplies that you need to build it.
Okay, but we can't all do all this anyway.
Right.
No, I'm just saying, for that one.
What's more important than a pole barn or a multipurpose room?
Maybe I would take the multipurpose room, Doug Cooper. I would take the multipurpose room, even though.
George, how about you?
That was me, sorry.
George?
Yep. I would say new roofs, boiler, fascia, and if we can add one more, I go multipurpose room. And, and I, I'm, I still think that we need to put all that through the capital reserve fund. If we can fund a repair reserve fund, which I am highly supportive of, that's to be used for additional things that are going to need to be done.
I agree with George.
Yeah. Well said, George.
So I have Barbara, Doug, George, and Jennifer putting the priority as the roof, the boiler, the fascia, and then the multipurpose room over the athletic field, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
And then Brian, how about you?
Yeah, I agree. I, I just want to say, I don't think Greg's proposal is not important. I just want to see, I, I didn't see the plans and all the other stuff. So I just want to go on the record to say, I think it's, his plan is necessary, but I just want to review more of the information before I just make a final decision.
Hey, you, I sent you those documents for you to review. Can I just, wait, George, one second?
Just one more question, Jill? If we set up the reserve, or the repair reserve fund, can the athletic field work be done out of that?
Frank?
So the, I believe the leveling of the field would be allowable. If you were to expand and putting in like, you know, lighting and things like that, then no. So I think, I think you'd be able to get parts of it out of the repair reserve.
Renovation could be done.
I think so.
Of the, of the repair, but no additional, no beautification could be done out of it.
Right.
Tom Kelly, you know, you've been talking probably way too much here. You want to weigh in a little bit on the, on the discussion?
Sure, I, I agree with the board, I think the roof is essential, the boiler here, I would definitely put a one and two. And, you know, anywhere from there, it's up to, you know, I, I think they're all needed, but it's definitely a lot. Those two, I, I would say definitely one and two, the boiler and roof.
But in terms of the capacity of the organization to be able to put all of these items into the capital reserve, we have the Frank, Greg, and Tom, do we have the capacity to do it? Now, again, it doesn't have to be done next year. You could be transparent with the public that, you know, we're going to prioritize these items, but they might not all get done in the next school year.
Yeah, Jill, to be honest, a lot of these would be obviously outside vendors. And to coordinate that, definitely over, you know, obviously we're doing the doors and the air conditioning, which are two big projects that will be taking place this summer, well, springing going into the summer, depending how it all works out with the, getting it all through. So those are big projects, but yeah, I don't see if we spread these out for a year and a half, two years, that's definitely doable.
They're all in separate locations, so nobody will be stepping on anybody's toes. So the scheduling of events could be all the same time, we're spread out, and, you know, whether we can get the vendor there or not.
Frank?
I would say, I would say I'm hesitant, I, I, I think, yes, anything we can do, it comes down to, you know, prioritization in terms of like, we have a very limited staff in terms of like, we have, like I said, there's like, in terms of like actual paperwork and filings, like these are monster jobs in terms of that. And as of right now, like the projects we have, remember, when we do it at two buildings, it's, it's two separate capital projects, so it's double the amount of filing. So it's like, we have eight real projects that are going on now. So if we.